Can anybody hear me?
I can hear you, Peter.
Sorry, I was a little delayed in checking in.
That's right, we're, uh, I think still waiting on Levi, but five after, I think we'll go ahead and get started. Justin, Steven, David, Peter, and Janice is with us, so. We'll go and get started and hopefully Levi joined us pretty quick. So it is seven oh five by my computer. I'd like to go ahead and call the regular scheduled council meeting, January thirteenth, twenty twenty one to order. If we, I know we have a few visitors, but if there's visitors that would like to be recognized, you can go ahead and state your name now for us.
Sherry.
Hi, Sherry.
And Joe Armon.
Hi, Joe. Thanks, guys, for joining us. Okay, seems like that's it. Additions to the agenda, so I have two of them here, pretty easy, pretty short, right off the bat. One is, um, you guys were sent a, an email for the Mid County seniors, uh, and the Memorial Hall stuff, so I want to add that on there. And then also, I want to talk a little bit about, uh, the Novia Grant Project over here at the Town Square and the, uh, water and sewer lines that were, um, putting in the alley there, so add those on there. Does the council have any other additions to the agenda?
Can we talk about the effect of the windstorm on city properties today?
Sure, we'll add that on there. Just put a windstorm, uh, city windstorm damage. Okay, any others? Okay, um, with those three additions, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as with the additions.
Peter, so moved.
Okay, we have a motion.
David seconds.
Second by David, any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, uh, all in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Peter says aye.
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 Okay, passes five zero. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to, uh, some approval, approval of meeting minutes. Uh, we'll start with the December ninth meeting minutes. Anyone have any questions, comments, concerns on that? Okay, I don't want to hear any. Would make a, I would entertain a motion to approve the December ninth, uh, regular scheduled city council meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, any more discussion on that?
Who made the motion and second, please, Nathan?
Um, Levi made the motion and Steven second.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing no more discussion, uh, all in favor of approving the minutes, uh, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
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 Peter says aye.
Okay, motion passes five zero. Thank you, council. We have some minutes from December twenty second, special, uh, special meeting. Any questions, comments, concerns on that? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the December twenty second special council meeting minutes.
This is Levi, so moved.
Okay, motion by Levi.
Peter seconds.
Okay, second, any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, I would, uh, all in favor of approving the December twenty second, uh, minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
We have all five in there, I think. About this, does anyone oppose or abstain? Okay, motion passes five zero, thank you, guys. Okay, um, December bills. Any questions or concerns on the bills?
I just, Nathan, I have, this is David, I have a couple here, but one, are we paying CenturyLink that amount every month? It seems like two hundred and fifty dollars and eighty one cents?
Uh, currently or previously, yes, uh, we've canceled one phone line that we didn't use, so that will go down, but yes, that has been a monthly, uh, reoccurring.
Okay. Now, that, that's just for a phone line, or is there internet on it, or what do, what else do we have on it?
So we had, so for the two hundred and fifty dollar amount, we actually had, um, three phone lines and our fax line, I believe, so there was four total. The internet, internet is not included in that, though, uh, we, we have different providers, but it will go down a little bit.
Okay. And, uh, I guess the other one, Inland Cellular, is that for how many phones? At ninety six dollars and seven cents?
It is two lines, um, one is a smartphone, um, that we split with the fire department for Scott's, uh, cellphone, and the other is just a, uh, just a standard line, so there's, there's two lines on there.
Okay. No other, um, Janice doesn't have a cellphone and, and, um, Charlie doesn't have one, correct?
Correct, that, that second line is for the other, um, this for Charlie, for the second public works person, if, if he wants it, uh, he just chose to use his own, so we actually, uh, that's kind of a, a floating cellphone. Jay had it for a while, he used it, uh, for the code compliance stuff, but, uh, no, just, just two lines, Janice doesn't have one, and I don't, obviously.
Okay. This is Peter, Nathan, uh, do I recall correctly that we vote on the paid bills, the payroll, and the unpaid separately? Or do we put on all of them at once?
I know, I know we definitely, um, go through them, kind of document by document, but I think we, we vote on them, uh, altogether, or that would be my preference.
Item ten eighty one on page one of the paid bills, MKB Lawn Care, is that, was that work outside their normal contract with the city?
As far as I can tell, yes.
What? Why did we have to contract separately?
Well, um, so this was a particular bill for leaf cleanup, um, I think, and Justin may correct me if I'm wrong, last year, I think they did this because last year, they cleaned up leaves, which was within their months that they mowed, so they didn't mow, or maybe they mowed and picked up leaves, or did it same time, so it wasn't charged. This year, um, they asked if we wanted it done, um, then Scott gave them the go-ahead, and then they actually charged us extra, like this is an additional bill that was charged, other than the contract for the lawn mowing.
Okay, thanks.
So, in the, in the future, um, I don't know, we're gonna have to look at that this year and see, I mean, that's a lot of money to have them pick up leaves, but, you know, if it's necessary, if we want it done, um, if we can get it scheduled to make sure that it's still within those months, that they are actively mowing.
Yeah. Do we have any idea how many hours they worked?
Um, I believe it would be on the invoice, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Yeah, that line item was my only budgetary question as well. Nathan, are you, i- is the, is the plan for Scott to hold the, the go-ahead for that in future years?
No.
Okay.
No, I would, I mean, I would obviously contact Scott and see, um, you know, if we need to have that done, or what would happen there. Frankly, I don't know the importance of it, if it's, if it needs to be done, if it's just an aesthetic thing, or if it, if it actually needs to be done to help the, to help the grass up there, I don't know, but no, I would, in future, going forward, um, I would definitely like to be able to make that decision, you know, along, alongside with Scott, but talk to him before it happens.
An argument that can be made is that if the leaves are left on the grass, and then they wet down and they mat, um, it makes it so that the leaves don't, or the grass doesn't receive much sunlight, but sometimes you can get away with just mowing over it and mulching it into a certain extent, so while I can maybe understand why we did something, it feels like, perhaps, more than we needed to do, but.
I agree. I think there was some mix-up there between Scott and, and the lawn care company of, you know, it was a, can we, do you want us to do this, and, and there was, you know, yes, we do, but I don't think that we knew, I don't think Scott necessarily knew that that wasn't within their original contract or their scope, so, um, whether we do it or not, you know, that's, that's up for the council to decide, and obviously, money-wise, but, um, yeah, we need to make sure, make sure that we know what's, what's going on, and, and if we're paying extra, if it's part of the contract, or within their timeline, I guess. Is that correct, Justin, uh, what, last year, uh, they did it, but it was within their timeline, so we didn't actually receive an additional, uh, bill?
Yes.
Yep.
And, and he talked to me about it, I mean, I talked to Anthony about it directly, so I, I'm surprised that Scott would have made that decision, but.
Yep. Any other questions, David, did you have any, any more questions?
Well, I, I just have one on the, um, this, uh, line one zero eight six, ten eighty six there, sunshine disposal and recycling, the three hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents, November garbage fees. Was that for actual garbage they picked up, or what, it seems a little low?
Yeah, so the, where's the big one? Janice, can you fill us in on that one? I see what you're talking about, David, I see it.
Yes, um, they owed us a refund, but after I had cut the check, they told me that it would mess up customer accounts if I deducted it out of the original bill, so it got, that amount got credited on the next, on the December billing.
Okay.
Gotcha, now that she says that, I remember talking about that, I apologize.
That's all right.
Yeah, no, no worries. That's all I have on that, guys, so.
Okay, anyone else have any other questions? Okay, um, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve, uh, the bills for, or all three of them, for the paid, uh, unpaid and the payroll.
So moved.
So moved. I'll second.
Okay, so we had a motion by Steven and second by Levi?
Yes.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the bills, uh, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 David says aye.
Peter's.
Okay, heard everybody, uh, motion passes five zero, thank you, guys. Okay. Moving along, um, twenty twenty budget amendment, um, I'm going to wait on that, we're still working on some, some stuff with, between, uh, Mike and myself and Janice, um, so I'm gonna wait on that, and as far as, uh, getting our, our last numbers in, so we have twenty days, um, that we keep, we can keep that open in January, so if we have bills or, or, uh, even revenues, and I want to wait till, uh, we get all those numbers in, so I want to wait on, on that, um, you guys have any questions while we're there, while we're on the subject? I mean, I, I realize you guys don't have a document in front of you necessarily, but if you have any questions off the top of your head.
Yeah, this is Peter, Nathan, you said you have twenty days, does that take us to the next regularly scheduled council meeting, or do we have to hold a special council meeting to pass it?
Well, I'd like to actually do it before the next, um, regular meeting, but the twenty days is just until the twentieth, so until the twentieth of January, that's, that's the actual end of twenty twenty, as far as our, our billing and stuff goes.
So not twenty days from tonight?
Correct, yep, twenty, twenty days from the beginning of the year, so, uh, January twentieth.
What's the amendment, please?
Um, we're gonna have quite a few, um, none of, so some of them are just adding some, some light items into the twenty twenty budget that we didn't have planned for, which we really couldn't have, so, um, like our loss prevention grants for the, um, handbook, um, and then there's some other ones that are just changing some numbers, so we had a budgeted amount, whether it's a revenue or an expenditure that just, it was different, and it's, uh, enough to constitute, uh, an amendment to that number, to that line item.
Okay.
But you, we'll get a list together, the document, as well as the, uh, as the, uh, amending ordinance as well.
So how are we gonna vote on it, then?
Uh, we won't vote on it tonight, that's, I'm gonna wait on that, just to make sure that everything's kosher and together and, and, uh, completed.
Are you proposing a special session, then?
Yeah, I would like to, I'd like to maybe set a, uh, a week or two weeks, or whatever we, we think, uh, we can do, another special meeting will be just for that, or the other option is, um, to do the amendment for that and the twenty-one amendment at the same time. We've talked a few times, or quite a few times, about, um, you know, changing some stuff on the twenty-one budget already, so that's, that's up to the council, if we want to get the twenty twenty-one, the twenty twenty, uh, budget done and out of the way, and then move on to the twenty-one, or if we want to do them at the same time, that's up to you guys.
When do you propose a vote on the matter?
Um, I would say within the next week or two at the latest, um, we, we will need to, I'd say at least two weeks, uh, just for, um, uh, publishing purposes, to get the, uh, ad in the paper.
I'm sorry, I guess I don't understand, I may have missed something, but I thought you said we have until the twentieth of this month to make the amendment on the twenty twenty budget.
No, we have, we have until the twentieth of this month to close our twenty twenty, um, cycle, I guess, for any revenues or bills, and ev- everything that, from twenty twenty, say, we get bills that are still coming in, but it was actually for, uh, uh, something that was done in December, that, that stuff will go, can go into the twenty twenty budget.
Okay, so, so the, the fiscal year is it, is, if you will, basically closes on January twentieth, when's, is there a limitation on when we can amend that after the, the close of the twentieth, then? Maybe what Peter's getting at?
I don't know the specific answer, I don't think so, I would think that you would be able to amend it after the, you know, quote-unquote fiscal year's done on the twentieth, to allow anything to come in or go out, so that we know what those, uh, uh, actual numbers are. What I can do is look that up, just to see. Is that what, kind of what your question was, Peter?
Yeah, I, several dates were mentioned, and I got confused by what our time constraints were.
The, yeah, the, the January twentieth is just the end date of, of when we can enter, um, bills or, or anything like that into the twenty twenty budget, that's when twenty twenty officially closes. Is on January twentieth.
But we can still amend it after that date, am I correct?
That's what Steven was just asking, I, I believe so, I would think so, I don't know for sure, I would have to.
Yeah, I know.
I would hope so, I would think so.
Yeah. Okay.
So I will look into that and get an email off to you guys. Um, okay, public hearing, the transportation improvement plan. Go ahead and open the public hearing at seven twenty-six for that. And I'll start off, uh, just with a little bit, um, and then let you guys, if you have any more questions or anything after that, um, right off the bat, you guys were sent, uh, the transportation improvement plan, uh, by email, if you look at the top of that document, it says from twenty-one to twenty-six, that, the twenty-one is actually incorrect, this, this was twenty twenty, it should read twenty twenty, however, the, the projects that are on there, the, the plan itself, the document, is correct, other than that date, so I, in, I will and can reprint that with the correct year on it, so I apologize for the, for the typo there. Guess everybody, Steven and David, I don't know if you've gone through these or seen these at all, um, but you'll see in the document, the first page, uh, it just goes through project by project, so there's all the information about it, the funding, um, dates, some stuff like that. There is, uh, five of them on there currently for the twenty twenty, and then the twenty twenty-one transportation improvement plan will be put together, and hopefully we can add some projects on here, um, there is no limit to how many are on there. So hopefully we can add some stuff on there, we, we rank these, um, one through whatever, and that, uh, whatever, however many projects there are, and it's kind of our importance, uh, priority, so our number one, um, was what we really want to do, so we can construct this however we want. This, doing the twenty twenty through twenty twenty-five, uh, transportation improvement plan, um, I was gonna work with the public works committee, and so the re, this being late is solely my fault, so I will take that, I will take that hit, um, just to let you guys know, this is usually done middle of the year, uh, I can't remember the date, I believe it's end of July possibly, but just to kind of give you guys a background, do you guys have any questions of anything that's on the document, or, or just in general?
This is David, Nathan, no, not at this time, I'm just going through it here, uh, I don't have any questions right at the moment, so.
Okay.
Oh.
You know. I have a question, uh, you corrected the version of the budget that was sent to us. You said it was from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-six, or twenty twenty-five?
Twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
What happened, Peter, is I just ended up sending you guys the wrong one, so you can, there's, you can toggle between the years, you can look at past ones, and then obviously, when you build your new ones, I was in the process of getting this put out, as well as the twenty twenty-one to the twenty twenty-six, so I was working on both of them. We'll, uh, we'll try to get together, I'm gonna send an email out to, um, with all the committees on there and some stuff that I want to try to get down, and this is obviously one of them, uh, going forward, that I just want to, um, try to get some more projects on here, so depending on funding and, and how that happens, we don't always get our first priority, and we don't always get anything off of here, but if we have more projects on there, I think better chance that, uh, at least one of them getting funded, so.
How are they ranked, Nathan?
For, through the funding sources, or just through us?
Through us, how did we rank the projects by their importance to the city?
Yeah, yep, that's exactly the, um, either the council can make a decision on all of them as a general, or as a whole, or, uh, like I worked with Rick, would have been twenty nineteen, uh, with doing it, and we just kept the rankings the same, so it'd just be importance that we feel, which one we, we want to plan to do first, and then going from there, kind of the importance of them.
Good, I guess I didn't understand. Is it the council that makes that decision, or the mayor? Or transportation?
It would, it would be the city, so it could be, it would be the mayor and the council as a whole.
Then when would do, would we do that?
Usually it's done, I, I believe it's the end of July, so sometime mid-year.
I should remember that, but I don't remember when we've done it years past.
So there was one other, there was six projects on here, um, and one of those projects was the West, uh, Adams Street Project, so because that one has been already funded, and we're currently working on that, that one got removed, and that's, so these are the remaining projects that are on there, but, um, I, I initially thought that there was, uh, because it's a six-year improvement program plan, that there were six projects. Uh, I was corrected, I talked to, uh, um, Rick Becker at the counties, now, we, you could put twenty of them on there if you want, so we can, we can put quite a few projects on here going forward. Any other questions?
Uh, just a comment, Nathan, off-subject, but I've got a ham radio chicken, now, I have to step away from the computer for about two minutes, I'll be back in two minutes or so.
Okay. Okay. I did mention the date on here, guys. I want to make sure that I'm not misleading. Um we normally this is approved in the middle of the year, so it would have been twenty twenty. However, I want to make sure that I'm not misleading you on the on the years and the dates, that if it would still be the twenty one through the twenty six. Justin, do you happen to remember from pre or or anyone else from previous years on the council? I'd have to log in to see, but. Either way, I'll I'll make sure I get the correct one.
What do you mean? I don't understand, Nathan. What do you mean about?
I was just correcting. I thought I'd printed off the twenty one to twenty six. And being that this, you know, you is usually done earlier, middle of twenty twenty. If the trend, if that six-year improvement plan is twenty through twenty five or actually twenty one through twenty six, if it's looking a year ahead.
I'm back, Nathan.
Nathan, I don't know how that is actually, but I think we typically, I'm I'm reading this here. There's a hearing in. There's a hearing in September, it says, or adopted in September, but I thought it was typically done in May or when it was presented in May, and then we had a follow-up. You know, later, but we do want to make sure that we have this filed for the twenty, even though it's gonna be done in twenty twenty one. I think it's imperative that we have it filed for last year and then do another one this year.
Yeah, yep, absolutely. I'll get that straightened out either way, but I yes, I agree. I want to make sure we got this one done and then we'll. I mean, within a month or two, we'll start looking at the other one. I'll find the the date on there. If I don't think there is a hard date on it. But if they suggest a date, I'd like to try to follow that. Okay, well, there's no other questions. Um I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Uh seven thirty six. And with closing the public hearing, I would then entertain a motion to accept. The Transportation Improvement Plan for twenty twenty.
David makes a motion.
Okay, we have a motion by David and seconded by Justin. Any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, uh all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
David, aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Motion passes five zero council. Thank you, guys. Okay, moving on here. Um. Ordinance five oh four. So. When we approved, did the budget in December, um this is my fault about not having the ordinance ready. Um to my understanding, we, even though we approved the budget. And Justin, you could correct me if I am wrong, if you know any different. Um we didn't actually have the ordinance for in December for the budget. We just approved that document. So that's this ordinance is essentially that. Um I've done this with some other things just to make sure that we're covered to actually um. Vote on the ordinance uh specifically, not just on the budget in general. I don't. I'm not entirely sure if we have to. If we have to make a motion and vote on an ordinance and the number itself or just the budget in general. So I want to put this out and and actually vote on this just to just to cover us to make sure we did it correctly.
I'll make the motion, Nathan. It's Justin.
Okay. Motion by Justin.
Peter seconds.
Okay, seconded by Peter. Discussion. Okay, all in favor approving ordinance five oh four, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
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 David's a nay.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, uh mass the motion passes uh four one. Uh you want to be recorded, David?
Say again?
Do you want to be recorded on on your nay?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Okay, um. Mayor's update. So there's three things on here. Um I'm gonna get the. The two US Bank stuff out of the out of the way first. So the credit card update and the safe deposit box. Um credit card update, I don't, there's nothing really changed there. We are just, we finally got all the information that they needed to the bank. We are physically or we were waiting on a physical card to get to us. Uh we haven't got it yet, but should be any time. That's pretty quick. Um if you guys have any questions, feel free, but not not too much there.
I have a question, Nathan. Where will the credit card be kept and who will be authorized to use it, please?
So we will probably keep it um in the safe locked here at City Hall. Um and as far as being authorized to use it, as as we, when we first started talking about this. It will just be Janice, just to get some our normal reoccurring stuff and some stuff with bills to use it. We this won't be uh taken with anyone. Won't we won't give it to Scott yet to to go purchase anything. We uh still need to get together and make the the policy so that we can kind of implement however we want, the council wants it to be used.
Okay.
So simple answer, we'll keep it in the safe and Janice will be the only one using it at this time.
All right. And what do you anticipate it'll be used for again?
Uh at the at right now or after we get the policy in place?
Once we get the policy in place.
I would like, I would like to be able to use this for um any of our, any of our, to pay any of our bills. So especially the places that we don't have accounts. Um you know, like the the Zoom stuff. Um you know, that right now, that's just on my card and I get reimbursed for it. Or Janice said something the other day that she bought for seven or eight bucks. That gets so anything like that. Um if Scott has to get something for the city for supplies somewhere where we don't have an account. Uh we can physically take that card and then in turn, some of the places that we do have an accounts, instead of actually physically writing a check. Um we can use that credit card to pay those bills.
All right, thanks.
So if uh and there's uh it'll help out accounting too to, you know, you guys. There won't be anything missed as far as what gets paid uh through the city from a council standpoint. You guys will still all see all of those uh transactions or anything that it's used for, so.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Nathan, I got a quick questions, David.
Sure.
I I was not gonna coincide, you know, I know what the policy handbook, we haven't quite got that, reached that yet. But uh that Chevron card that we're using right now, is that used by maintenance or Scotty on on the road? Or where's where are the charges coming off of that or what's it for and how? In part two is uh this credit card eliminate that fuel card?
Yes, um so first part of the answer is yes, it is used uh by maintenance. Uh that's what Scott uses if he needs to get fuel out of town. Um and that's where those charges are incurred from. And then the second part of that question is yes, we will essentially eliminate that. That WEX card that we have and use the new card.
Okay. Sounds good.
So a lot to, we got an email going out, so we'll we'll get together and get that uh get that policy together.
Well, I kind of, we were working on that. I mean, it, you know, we answered it. I think that's right the direction. That's good. So, okay.
Um safe deposit box update. So Peter and Janice and myself um last Friday went into US Bank. And uh got that puppy open finally, so um we have a pretty complete list. Well, uh if you guys wanted a full list of what was in there. Really, there's only two things in there. There was our investment money, our paperwork for our invested money was in there. Some of our bonds and and stuff like that. It's just a lot of just US Bank printed sheets. So they're just uh just showing balances and stuff like that. And that's all the money that we have investments. Um so there's nothing too exciting. The only other thing that was in there that didn't have to do with our um invested money. Was the official or original um. Combination card for the safe here at City Hall. So it looks like, I don't know if it was reset at one time or or when we purchased it or whatever. We got an official card that gives the combination and and that was in there. So that was it. It wasn't real exciting. But it was good to get in there and see what was there, so.
This is David.
Yeah.
Refresh my mind, how much do they charge a month or a year for that box? I don't recall.
Now you're fishing. Um I think it's. Believe it's by the month. And I hate saying it being recorded, but I want to say it was around twenty two or twenty three dollars.
Okay. She couldn't show up on our monthly bills?
Yeah, um it should. I know it's um it's definitely on the uh treasures report. We get that from Mike. I know I've seen it on there before.
I have a boxer, Nathan, and I'm charged by the year. It's about.
Are you?
Yeah, I think it's between twenty and thirty dollars a year.
Okay.
But they may have a different rate for the city.
That sound, that could be right. Peter, I may be mistaken. Maybe it is by the year because I don't remember seeing it on our monthly bill. So it could be, could be a yearly fee and that that amount rings a bell, but I can, I can get that amount if uh if you want, David.
Well, no big, I was just off the top of your head. I just, how much it was cost, but um yeah, I think that's probably why we don't see. Don't see it that often because they have once a year or so.
Yeah.
Makes perfect sense. Yeah, no worries. I was just curious.
Okay, but yeah, nothing too exciting in there. Like I said, if um we can either send out what was in there in an email, a little. You know, give you a little bit more detail or if you guys want to stop in and look at it, that's fine too, but. Nothing too exciting, no gold bars.
Well, the only thing I'd say to that is that keeping titles and stuff. Um land or vehicles and stuff like that, why that's not in that, if we're gonna keep that, why it's not in that safety deposit box?
Yeah, no, I think I think there's probably some stuff that we could, we could put in there and utilize it a little bit more. I don't know off the top of my head exactly what those would be, but maybe like you spoke, like vehicle titles or or important paperwork, but.
Give just a little more justification, you know, you know, twenty bucks, twenty three bucks is not a lot for a year, but. Um you know, for a lot of different reasons, you know, it's in a safe box, you know, and. Um I don't know, just a thought going forward if we want to load it with other stuff. I don't even know how big this will hold. I mean, what what's the size of this thing? Is it just?
It's it's not real big. I'm gonna guess um. Maybe six inches wide, um four inches tall by maybe. Sixteen or eighteen deep, maybe. So it's not not real big. In fact, the paper, the stuff that was in there. Um you know, it was, I bet you it filled up half of it at least. So it's not a, not a big box at all.
Bigger than a bread box, about same size, right?
Yeah, somewhere in there.
Okay, yeah, well, I don't know, maybe scratch that idea, put more stuff if it's not that, if it's not gonna be convenient or conducive to do in that. Okay, that's all I have on that.
Uh I have a question. About the contents of the box. There were some of those items that I didn't understand fully. Have you reviewed the list of items in the box and do you have a good handle on what each one of them is or does?
I do not. I have not a chance to get back to it. Uh I talked to Mike a little bit about it being that, um you know, he deals with our. Our money and our investments. So I thought it'd be a good idea maybe for him to go down and look at it and then and then go forward with. Make sure that we know exactly what the what the paperwork is telling us.
I think it might be useful to have a a written summary of the items we found with a short description of what it is or what it does. And its importance to the city.
Okay.
And I know that heaps a little bit of work on your shoulders or Janice's shoulders. But I think, given the magnitude, the size of some of the certificates in there. We ought to have a uh a statement drawn up and dated.
Yeah, we can do that.
I I for one was a little confused by some of the receipts. It wasn't clear to me whether they were receipts that. Are current or have expired or for for uh negotiable instruments that have been redeemed.
Yeah, yep, and talking, we talked with Sage uh that day as well, and she was willing to, you know, get a hold of the bank. Get a hold of the correct people at the bank if we needed any help on clarifying on that stuff. So I don't think it'd be too tough to do, take a little time. Okay, um okay, we'll jump back up to the top line of the mayor's update. Um set date for twenty twenty one budget amendment. So when we uh finished the budget in December. We uh going forward, that didn't reflect any of the possible changes or probable changes that we uh had talked about making. So I guess the first part of this, I wanted to ask the council um. Kind of a to a shoot for a date to be able to um. Get get the budget amended. And so before that, obviously, we'll have to make sure that everything that we wanted to change, whether that's rates. Or salaries or any of that stuff. Um get that, get that together and then meet to uh to get that amended. Do you guys have a preference or when you'd like to get that done? I mean, obviously, sooner than sooner the better. But what what's your guys' thoughts on on that?
Two weeks from today.
Two weeks from today. Which would put it the twenty seventh. Janice, will that work with the paper? Yeah, that should work all right because we'll have to put an advertisement in, run for two weeks, one, two.
Would that classify as a special meeting, Nathan?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, okay.
I got lost in that discussion, Nathan. What's what are we addressing again? You said you're going up to the top of the list again?
Uh just the first line of the mayor's update section.
Oh, I see.
So I just skipped around a little bit there.
Okay, thank you.
We have some things that we knew we wanted to change uh going forward for the twenty twenty one budget uh rates, you know, the inactive rates, maybe salaries. Some some other stuff like that. Um I was just asking for a date. Stephen uh sounded pretty confident. In two weeks from today, which would be the twenty seventh of January. Would that work for everybody?
Good for me.
Good for me, Nathan.
Okay, sounds like that's gonna work. Levi, good with the twenty seventh? We still have, Levi?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm I'm just working right now, so I'm on mute most of the time. It'll work just fine for me.
Alrighty, well, we will uh we'll plan on that then. Uh that will be the twenty twenty one budget amendment. January twenty seventh, twenty twenty one. And we will have to get an ad in the paper quick.
It's seven o'clock, Nathan?
Uh yeah, let's shoot for seven, unless you guys want to go earlier. Seven's a good time. Okay, um I don't have anything else for the mayor's update section. Um. Next on the gen- we'll go through the regular agenda items and then go to the additions, so we'll move on to the storage building, the cemetery. Looks like, uh. David, your name is attached to that.
Okay, well, um, I know this has been a topic in prior meetings. And um, just the other day, I had a little free time to walk in there, didn't go inside the building. But addressing what we have, um, I didn't realize the gravity of where those flags are or. One thing that really kind of stood out is the north end of it is seems to be the. The uh in and out, where there were a lot of traffic and the tracks and going across the graves themselves. And personally, I didn't quite agree with that, and I know it's the way the thing was designed years ago. But I going forward, I'd like to eliminate that to where traffic does not cross over. Uh, graves and sink them in or or do net damage, whatever to them. But you definitely could see where uh traffic has been. Constantly going to and from and not on the road, but it's the north side of that building. I do agree. That shed, I don't know what year it was built, but it's we see it's a past, it's a due, I believe. Surprised the windstorm like we had last night, uh, you know, huffing and puffing, blow it away. But I don't know how much room we're gonna need. I kind of stepped it off. It uh, there's like tells it's twenty, it's twelve by uh twenty-two or it's around that footage. It's not exact, I didn't have a tape measure with me. But I think, you know, for going forward with our needs, uh aesthetically looking and productivity. Uh, purposes. I think, you know, something a little larger, like a fifteen by thirty would suit us better. And uh, I don't know how. Two things, location wise, that really paints us, you know, into a pickle up there. There's a tree on to the south end of it. And the grave sites on the um north. So you'd have to use just that that road, service road going in and out there, and I don't know if that would suffice. Or food for thought, do we move it to the corner of the cemetery or a a location? Uh, preferably the southeastern corner. Um, or um, just I I don't know, it it just. The other parts of that is why I want it bigger, is that if we're going to use it for storage for flags and stuff like that. I'm opposed to having outside sources, having any ownership in building or, you know. Attach their name to it far as obligation. I would suggest that maybe, I don't know if it's come out right, but that we we build the building. And we charge them a nominal fee and rent. For that storage, because I I don't really know how much they would need. You guys probably have a better handle on that. Uh, I heard earlier that they. What's that?
Are you talking Lions Club wise for like flags and stuff that we've talked about?
Yeah.
Okay.
I I know there was talk about a trailer and so they could ease pulling them in and out, which makes perfect sense. But going forward, I think something that that we can utilize as well, I don't know if we're always gonna have contracted services for lawn equipment. But something that we could utilize with mowers and sprinkler, whatever in there. Maybe even a a little workbench, you know, working on, uh, it doesn't have to be real big, but you know, working on irrigation systems and. Um, have you, you need something there, a little bench to, you know, get into them little critters once in a while. But I don't know how that's I I haven't got a hold of, um. Well, stims and lumber builds a lot of little shacks and stuff. I haven't been able to get a hold of them. I'll be going to Spokane tomorrow. I've been wanting to get some ideas and stuff, honestly, I see on. The uh websites and the prefabs and stuff, they all look good and dandy, but that's like the smoky wards. And by opinion, you know, in a few years, they're just garbage. And even though this thing is dilapidated to the point of no return, um. It still is better built than, you know, some of the newer stuff you can buy. Yeah, strictly my opinion, I if we do something, I'd like to see it substantial and last another. I don't know, fifty, eighty years or, you know, I I might be asking a lot, but. Something that's just not a cheap shed that the wind can pick up and and blow, you know, blow away. Um, like I said, I was willing to go get some prices or just a ballpark of of what it would take. And then going forward from there, that would be further discussion. But I'd like to get it, one of the things is I'd like to get away from. I don't know how they're really doing it, but they're driving over the graves and that's kind of in my book, a kind of a no-no.
Who do you think's driving over the graves? Is that, I mean, is that the uh the city workers or the or the lawnmower, the contractor?
I don't know, did they pull up to the door, to that that north side door, sliding door? So I'm just assuming, I don't know a hundred percent, but who I don't know what's in there. If I saw in there, I'd be able to tell. Uh, are the flags currently on a trailer or?
Using that, David, from the only people would be using would be the city. Lions Club does not use that building. No one other than the city employees use it.
The the flags are in the basement of the city hall, and as far as I know, they either uh have always been there. Or sometimes they've been on a trailer in a crate and ostriches shed, but um those are the only two locations I've ever known the flags to be.
Okay, I I'm not pointing fingers at anyone. I'm just saying that that door is in the wrong place now. The shack is is um logistically defunct. Uh, there there's, when it was built, I'm sure there might not have been those graves there. Because what they, the way, there's a tree now that probably was a little sapling to the south that. You know, they're not gonna do nothing, and there's one facing the west, but it's it's a more of a, it's not a very big door. Um, but the the bigger utility door where you would put stuff. Uh, is on the north side and to get there, it's it's over those, uh. Well, it's it's directly crossing over the graves, uh, not, I mean. The part where the casket's laying, and I I think it's just, it's just in the wrong place, I believe, because, um.
I I would.
If you do build another shed there, go go ahead.
I'd be in favor of moving moving the building if we were wanting to do something up there as far as constructing a new one is to. Is to actually just simply move it like you suggested, maybe over to the other corner, uh, to where we don't run into those same problems. And yeah, I mean, they're eventually, you know, things might fill up as far as more graves being. Put in some of that other property, but there's a dirt pile there now, and maybe we could fit it over there, tuck it away in the corner. Uh, just just to get it out of there, so we don't have to worry about anything like that continuing to happen.
Well, I I, you know, and also when that was built, I mean, the the size of lawn mowing equipment was a push mower and an old. Real mower, my dad did it for years in high school and stuff. And, you know, we talked about the, you know, the little more, you didn't need a big space to put that stuff, you know? Now you have, you know, whether it be leaf blowers or this and that, another thing, and irrigation, that's always, well. You you deal with that. That would be the only drawback. We'd have to look at how you would, we were, the city would move. The headquarters or the valves and the controls for the sprinkler systems. I. I it doesn't sound like a big deal, but there would probably be a a modest expense, you know, not not great. If uh having to move that controls, um, that'd be the only concern, so. With that, uh, I think that's all I had on that, so I'll yield and let you guys comment.
Thank you, uh, I actually have that, so um, I have a. Uh, document here with our committees on it, and I actually have that uh number two under the Parks and Cemetery, so. Um, I know those guys have worked a little bit on just more of the the Lions Club's storage part of it, uh. You know, already, but I'd like to see it and, you know, other guys are welcome to. Um, you know, David, if you want to get some uh price quotes, but to have the Parks and Cemetery Committee kind of work on that and see what we want to do up there, so.
Oh, no problem. It's just been, it's been presented to the council several times, and I had free time and. Uh, right now is a perfect ti- you know, no snow this winter, so. Uh, look at something, just throw out ideas, and I'm not trying to run roughshod anybody, but I do know it's a concern with some. The citizens and stuff and and and, you know, we all have a stake in this community and I would like to, you know, um. Throw out ideas and um, that's my idea anyways, whether you guys like it or not, but I. Um, I would go with something more substantial than just a Sears and Roebuck, you know, tin shed.
Yeah, no, I.
Not saying you guys are doing that, but.
And I will.
Okay.
I will remind you guys to, um, we do have some money, I budgeted some money. Into twenty twenty-one for a possible uh replacement or whatever we want to do up there, so there's some money set aside for that, so.
How much?
Uh, ten thousand.
Hmm.
Which obviously that can be changed if we if we needed to or wanted to, but that's. That was just as the potential of, you know, spending some money on a building up there of some sort, whether whichever route we went.
Um. Another thought, I don't, I don't know if it's worth advocating for, but. Perhaps if the only thing that that building is doing is housing the control mechanisms for the. Sprinkler system and stuff, the city, I know the Lions Club would like something, but let's talk about what the city does or doesn't need. Now that we're not ho- housing our own equipment, perhaps it's possible that if we could turn. We get get rid of the building and put the control equipment in some type of a service box. Leave it roughly at its current location, that that meets the city's needs. I'm sure that doesn't win me any points with any Lions Club members, but the point is is that it, I would agree, if we're gonna build something, we should build it right. But on the other hand, I'm not exactly sure that we have a clear vision for what the city needs from up there. It doesn't really sound like, other than. Housing the control. Equipment that we necessarily have a a need up there, so. Um, I don't know, ju- just a thought that maybe we should look at it really, what would we do with it? Because to for us to build a building just to nominally lease it to the Lions Club doesn't. It's great for the Lions Club, but I don't know if it really makes a lot of sense for the city.
I I should probably say, Steven, when I.
And and to be clear, David, I didn't think that's why you were advocating building it. I I I understood, at least I assumed that you were saying we build it for. A number of reasons and that's one of them. I I wasn't framing that your argument was.
Right. Well, I just wanted to make it clear too, thank you, by the way, um, that it's a space, not the whole building, uh, leasing it out. Was was what was my intentions, and if I misled anyone, I apologize, but uh, yeah, it would just be, um. And and, you know, I don't think you have to really hose a person on it, but um, it it would solve, it would, it would. Kill two birds with one stone. I mean, it would solve an issue. Um, all the way around, so that's what I was looking at, and that's all, I mean, so with that, I'll I'll yield.
Yep.
I have a question, Nathan.
Sure.
Uh, the flags we're talking about storing potentially up at the cemetery. Are they just those flags that are lined or used along the highway in front of the cemetery? Or are all the flags that are used downtown expected to be stored up there as well?
Uh, the ones that we speak about normally when we talk, especially Lions Club, are just the ones that line the cemetery.
And how many flags are there, do you know?
Ooh, guys are asking, okay, uh.
Like a dozen, maybe?
No, I'd say fifty.
Fifty?
Maybe, yeah, that'd be a rough guess. I don't know what that actual number is.
Was it ninety? I thought I heard, I I can't remember, I'll shut up, I won't say nothing. But keep in mind, there's also flags for veterans on their grave sites. And I don't know if Scotty's on or whatever, but I I know that veterans get the little flat, you know, flags and. Uh, so I don't know where tho- those are at, so. To answer your question, Peter, that we're, you know, it was the big flags that, uh, on the west end entrance to the cemetery.
One issue that we haven't discussed and I think is a bit more prominent on our radar than it was when we last discussed this issue. Is the issue of uh security, security of against. Theft, fire and sabot- general sabotage. I think it's more of an issue than it was a month ago. And whatever we do should be done with that in mind. I'm a little bit concerned about a wooden building, given how subject to fire they are.
Yeah, I think I think we just need to let that committee uh kind of reconvene and and talk to, you know, go through. Uh, whatever scenarios we think they think, and then maybe bring some options uh to the council and see if. See how we want to go about that a little bit more.
Okay.
Okay, um. Sale of the city-owned properties, it's got David and Steven. Um, I don't know who wants to start or, but I'll give the floor to one of you guys.
No, I'll try it for a second here. Uh, I was just, any updates on? The property itself, how many we have? I've looked at, you know, tax sifter and looked at a couple of them. And does anybody, uh, Mr. Mayor, do you do you see any problems with going forward with this? Any uh red flags or?
Um, no, as far as problems, I don't. Um, I've got this list here at the at the hall. That's got the prop- it's all the information, it's from Lincoln County. And then, um, like I said, I've put my personal opinion, I went through and looked at on the map, some of these, obviously, we we need to keep their. You know, the shop and the sewer and lagoons and some of that. Um, so I have a, what I thought we should uh keep or we need to keep. Or would be a good idea to, and the ones that, you know, they're they're not doing anything for us, and uh, like we've discussed before, is getting these. You know, sites that are maybe buildable for a a building or a house, and then obviously go back into. Into the the taxes, so, um, but as far as problems, no, I I don't, I haven't come upon any yet.
Well, we could alleviate a lot if we could sell the sewer lagoon. No, it sounds good, and and I I I just wanted to briefly touch on that. I know we've been working at that and you have as well, and I just wanted to. Anybody ideas and um, so I'll, that's all I had to say about it, so I'll yield the floor to Mr. Hardy.
Well, I I didn't really have a lot else. I was just, you know, I I don't think it's a been a high priority for me to see. It done quickly, but just that we're continuing to make progress. Um, maybe it would be an advisable thing for us to hold a public hearing. On the city, on the properties that we think are saleable.
Sure.
Um, and that way we can give anyone a chance to object if they know of a reason why the city should hold. A property that we don't, and then with that in our back pocket. The council can feel confident that no one in town has raised any significant issues. And there is really no reason for us to not give it a whirl.
Yeah, absolutely. Does does any of the the council members have any uh opposition to? Once we we figure out which properties exactly that we want to, um. Sell, does does any of the council members have any opposition to doing that, the selling, to sell these, some of these parcels?
I think the sooner we do it, the better.
Okay. Well, I agree, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was on the same same path. So, yeah, uh, Steven, to what you said, I guess, just keep going. Um. I think, uh, I think we should and. Um, we'll try to do that within a reasonable amount of time. Time seems to sure slip away. Okay. Um, Steven, you're up again, tech update.
Yeah, uh, I'll keep this brief, so Janice's laptop is configured and pretty much ready to go, the next step on that. And Janice, I should have told you this earlier when I was talking with you, but I realized after I hung up that I forgot. Uh, we were gonna wait on getting the bias stuff moved to the cloud until after we got through the fiscal year. It sounds like we're. Kind of coming up on that, so when you feel like it's a good time to do that and that we are at lower risk of any potential impact. We should probably get bias moved to the cloud. And then when bias is in the cloud, then, and the reason why that's pertinent to her moving machines. Is that theoretically, all she'll have to do is log into bias on the new laptop and everything's there. I don't have to transfer any data because it just logs in and boom, everything. And we don't have to transfer any data because it just logs in and boom, everything's there. So that, that is a part of getting her from one machine to another. And then, then her and I will work up, work on setting up the rest of that. Um, the microphones and, and cameras are all ready to go. Um, one of the microphones is at City Hall, the other one I ha- I still have in for, for testing stuff. They're pretty much ready to install, the testing's done. I haven't taken them down to City Hall and I just need to, I since we aren't doing any in-person meetings, there's no use for them. So I just hadn't moved it down there, but probably just for the sake of correctness and placement, I should get those two objects um, with the city within the next week would be good. And then the last uh, collection of items, of course, is the iPads. Um, I mentioned last time uh, that my goal was to make sure and get them all configured into a system where I can push configurations remotely. Uh, one of the notable things that will come up is that at some point here, we'll have all, you know, emails for each city council member and the mayor and Janice at Harrington, at the Harrington dot city domain. So that all of you guys, you know, we talked about the value of having um, city hosted and controlled emails for the sake of disclosure and all those kind of concerns, right? So when those come along, it's better for me to be able to log into the, oh, an online presence in my house and push a configuration to your machine that within a few hours, all of a sudden your iPad has its email configured. Instead of us having to get together and that kind of stuff. It also provides us things like if the iPad is stolen, we can remotely lock it, we can track where its position is, we can, you know, make sure that it's got its updates. If there's a new app that everyone should be using, like the Zoom client, uh, I can push it to all your guys' machines so that you guys don't have to install it yourselves. So it'll make life a lot easier for everyone. Uh, the problem is, is that I haven't done this before and I have no problem getting through it. The problem is just, I'm learning as I go. I thought that uh, the, the most recent thing I was working on of getting Apple Business Manager set up was going to completely do everything I needed. And then when I got into it, which Nathan and I had to kind of go through some back and forth on getting into that, I think that happened last week. Um, I found out that it's only half of the solution of what I need. So I'm getting the other half of it set up and then hopefully that will be where uh, we need to be, to be able to, to give the iPads out because then I can finish any configuration once it's in your guys' possession. So we are making progress. It's not that nothing's been happening. It's just we found out there's a little bit more work to do than originally planned on. And uh, the city gets all this for free. So I, I don't feel like anyone's down my throat, but I just wanna be upfront with the fact that we can go faster. It just means you need to pay someone who knows what they're doing. I'm still discovering what I'm doing and working through it in, in the time that I have available, so. Um, we'll get there, but it is a little bit later than I thought it would be, so. Any questions?
Thank you. This is Peter. I have a question. Thank you for doing that, Stephen. Am I correct in assuming on the basis of what you said that we have the machines in hand now?
Oh, yeah, a- and we have for a number of weeks. I have all of the iPads unboxed. Um, I also actually, I don't know if I did this last meeting, I meant to. I wanted to give um, some kudos to David and for the ordering process. Maybe I did this last meeting, but I'll do it again because that's fine. Uh, cause I kind of gave him a long shop, laundry list of there, we also got the iPads and the pencils engraved. So that they have City of Harrington on them and then also A, B, C, D, and E. That way, if an iPad is discovered, we know what's its matching pencil and whose is it is. But that probably also took a bit of time in the ordering process to get all of that right. And as far as I can tell, all the engraving is perfect. And everything matches up. So I have all the devices and every- everything looks good. There's no damage in shipping. All of them have turned on and updated. I just need to get that configuration component done, so.
From whom did we finally purchase them, Stephen? Or David?
Well, there was a collection, uh, so the iPad Pros were purchased from Apple, as were the pencils and the uh, the, the magic keyboards. The iPad, I believe, came from Costco and the, the, because there, we, we couldn't afford six of the same device and setup with the money that we had allotted. So we have five of the same for each of the council members and then the sixth one, which is the mayor's and/or the enforcement officers, one is a, is a lower package. And that was purchased through Costco and Amazon, I believe, for that sixth setup.
Thank you.
And, and you're more than welcome, Stephen, and everybody. This is David. And just uh, to add to that, availability is what uh, forced different uh, senders to answer Peter's question is why.
Yeah, but we worked out, we came in pretty, I think we came in just a little bit over budget on the iPads. But actually, when I went to purchase the GoPro camera, Costco had a sale that pretty much equaled the same amount we were over on the iPads. So between the cameras, the microphones and the iPads, I think were, it came out to just about exactly what the council authorized on, on the whole. So ca- it came out really well.
Good.
Well, perfect. Thank you again, Stephen, for doing all that and David as well for uh, purchasing those. Okay.
You're welcome.
additions to agenda, we have a couple here that I added. And then I think uh, Stephen had one, so. I will start out real quick. The first one I had is you guys got a, a second email um, with the letter from the Mid County Seniors. It was turned in, I think, yesterday. Do you guys have any questions on what that uh, letter stating or just the, the process here? They are Mid County Seniors are no longer associated with the uh, OCTN. And they, they've kind of formed a new group or working with a new group. It's the Lincoln County Seniors. They're gonna go a little bit different about the, about the um, senior meals at the Memorial Hall. So that uh, Billy's been in touch with myself, kind of keeping me up to date a little bit. And then it's been pretty good about, you know, turning in a written, a letter kind of stating what we talked about on the phone, but the gist of what was sent to you guys um, is the Mid County Seniors um, making a request to the city to continue the same um, the same fee that we had set for the Memorial Hall. Um, I don't, I can't, Janice may be able to answer it. I don't remember exactly what that rate was. Um, but I wanted to get your guys' consent or ideas or concerns with just continuing uh, that same rate as they go forward. For a Memorial Hall rental.
Nathan, this is David.
Yeah.
You kind of touched on, that was my question, is that they, they were requesting the same agreement and is, the agreement is just the fee involved?
Yes, correct.
Much, okay.
There is another, um, we had approved, I think when I was on the council. Um, we had approved, they had a, we had a packet that went along with it. So there, there is some other stuff in there, but that's um, that's the request, is that they pay the same amount that they were paying before.
That agreement have a proviso in it, if I remember correctly, to allow for uh, for refrigerator that's not the city's to be used in the kitchen?
I don't remember. It could, um, if we need to, we can abs- we can review that agreement that as a whole. Um, if you guys want to take a look at that, we can email them out or, you know, I mean, the pri- the I know there's a copy here in the city hall, but if we want to look at the whole agreement. The, the price was really the only thing that um, Billy and I spoke about.
My only concern would be that we just have a provision in the reference to the allowance for the refrigerator that we would require that the refrigerator would be within a certain number of years old. Uh, cause if they get a refrigerator from the seventies or the fifties or sixties, it'll go forever. It'll also use up a lot of electricity at the city's dime. So I just think, you know, it's appropriate that if you want to store a fridge on there, fine. I'm not even necessarily saying we should charge them for the for the electricity usage if we didn't before. I'm just saying, you know, that's our accommodation and consideration of them. I think we should put it in writing that we expect a consideration in return that they'll put an efficient rel- you know, a reasonably efficient refrigerator in there uh, so that they aren't burning through electricity for us.
Nathan, this is David. I just wanted to add uh, liability insurance or liability, um, that part of it. Is that figured in any, in, in the equation in any of this or is it need be?
Boy.
For anything?
I don't, I'd have to actually see that full agreement to answer your question uh, truthfully. I, I just don't want to guess. I, I don't know for sure, David.
Yeah, I don't know either. You don't know if people rent it and certain things, but the teja society like we live in, I just wondered who was covering that. I don't expect an answer right now. I mean, we'll have to definitely bend to it, so.
But I think maybe it'd be appropriate um, is to get that, maybe get that agreement sent out so you guys can look at the, the you know, the latest to date one. Obviously, it's gonna be a little bit different because that was with the uh, OCTN. And now it will not be, but um, I hear Stephen hard on the, on the fridge, but uh, the, the main point of that was just the price, the rental, the rental fee. So are you guys? If, even if we have to have some other things in that agreement, a new agreement made uh, is the pri- you know, the keeping them at the same rate, okay with you guys? And I don't see any rea- any reason to change it.
Yes, no, Nathan, this is David. I think from what I read, this is a positive move and I'm glad to see it. And whatever we can do to keep it going, I think we should. Um, I, I think it, so I, I'm, I don't know what the amount is, but if it's worked before, I don't see it changing. I think we should accommodate our seniors uh, the best to our ability. And uh, and not put up a bunch of roadblocks for them. So I, I, I'm good with this, you know, just I was just wondering about the um, church needs or if that's ever been addressed, but that's, we discussed that later, we'll find out more, so. I yield.
And we can put some uh, put some of this information together and get it out in the email so that, you know, you guys are uh, have that as ammunition to, to look at that and know what, know what's going on. I, I'd imagine, I mean, we haven't made it there yet, but I imagine there would be some kind of a, you know, a written agreement. Um, that's obviously not tied to the OCTN, so. I will make a note of that and try to um, try to get that out so you guys can see all that. Okay.
Sounds good.
Um, second other one that I added, um, is the Novia project here, the town square. Um, this Public Works installed some uh, new water lines in the alley directly west of the town square project for the town square project, as well as two property owners that have lots back there that wanted um, access, you know, wanted to be tapped into water. So we got that part, the private part taken care of it, the private ownership parcels. Um, I had a question come up about the town square project and it said, well, when we're doing the billing for the private citizens, so well, we're gonna charge the uh, Novia grant, you know, their fees and hookups. Uh, the tap into the water and the sewer and stuff, the potential of having a bathroom there. And I said, you know, that's a good question. So my question for the council is, your guys' uh, thoughts or decision on having the Novia grant, the vacant lot project pay for their portion of installing those utilities. We can either um, split it that way and charge them for the parts and service and hours like we would a private, private citizen, or being that that's city property, do we want to make that as our contribution partly to the project, but also on our own recognizance? I mean, that, that essentially is our property. So I, I kind of want to give you guys a floor and see what you think there should, um, you know, my, my personal opinion um, would be to recover the costs. But as well, there's only so much money in that grant and the donations that were made for that project. And I, I don't want to diminish that either. Uh, to make sure that everything that's planned to go in there can be paid for, so. Um, I'll yield the floor to you guys and see what, see what your thoughts are.
Nathan, this is David.
Yeah.
And I, 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 right off the top, I agree with you. I think we should recover it. But I also have questions going further in, in the future here. Maybe we'll bring it up on the next agenda, but is thi- this property, is it something that is gonna be encumbered on us to take care of and maintain, be in the city going forward? Or what's the city's involvement? Uh, I don't expect anything right now, but uh, we keep that in mind. Uh, so we, the city put the expense out, so yes, um, I, I would be, I would personally, I would tend to split the cost uh, with the other or how are you said it there, at the start, with the other um, not tenants, but residents that hooked onto the line as well. So that's my thoughts and I'll yield to you guys.
I would put to a vote at the next meeting and if a represent, representative of the the project wants to come and petition the council for there's, as to the reason why they feel like they are no- not able or in the position to pay that cost, then the city can consider it. Um, otherwise, if no one shows up or they make no contest to it, I think we should recover the costs.
Okay. Anything else? Any other thoughts on that? I just, I, I honestly, uh, I didn't even think about it until the question was, was asked. And then I thought, well, that'd be something I'd, I'd like to have you guys make that decision on, so. I will uh, get in contact with somebody who can um, speak in the next meeting then and we'll get a vote on it. Okay.
Um, Nathan, this is Peter.
Yep.
The one thing we didn't seem to discuss on this is the amount of expense involved. Uh, do you have a handle on that?
Uh, we do. We have a pretty good handle on it. I just don't have it in front of me.
Okay.
So we ended up ser- we ended up uh, putting uh, water utilities in for three, three customers. And then we have, you know, the total, we split those up by uh, how much pipe was used and the fittings and, and all that stuff and the labor. So we, we definitely have a handle on it. Just can't tell you that amount right now.
Okay.
I apologize for that, but I will make sure to have that amount ready.
Thank you.
All of it to you prior to the next meeting. Okay, I uh, am done with my additions. Stephen, you had one quick one that you wanted to touch on, um. We had quite the windstorm.
Yeah, I just wanted to hear a report of if there was any damage to city properties. I did notice that the back, the west side of the city hall roof was torn off. So I was wondering if there was any other damages that occurred today.
Um, yes. The city hall roof um, was damaged. So Janice and Scott worked on that and actually have already got a a claim number and going on that. Um, so we have a plan of attack to get that. Um, we'll get it temporarily fixed if it needs to be for the time being and then we'll go forward with a uh, uh, route to get it fixed through our insurance. So uh, that was noticed and it's already being taken care of. As far as any other damage to city property, um, I haven't heard of any. We had a, I know we had one tree go down by the city park. Um, we gotta wait till that it all gets cleaned up. Hopefully nothing else is damaged there, but this, the city hall uh, roof is the only thing that I know of at this point.
Alrighty.
Uh, one, one comment about the tree that went down by the city park, it tore up a couple sections of sidewalk.
Okay.
So we're gonna have to replace those. So we're gonna have to replace those or reseat the existing concrete.
On the south side of it? I haven't gone and looked. What side of the park is it on?
On the west side. There was damage at Rick Becker's. Place, but I'm not sure. I haven't seen that yet. I don't know if there's any of that on public land, city land, I should say.
Yes, Peter, I, okay, I'm with you now. Yeah, I was talking about the one at Rick Becker's. It just it fell into the city street or across the city street. But you're you're talking about the one that fell and popped the sidewalk at would have been Bob and Gwen Reese's old place where. Tim's live now.
Dan lives there now.
Oh, okay, yep. So that'd be on the west, west side of the city park.
Looks like we're gonna have to replace or rebuild those sidewalks.
It's like we have something else we need to take care of then. I I truthfully haven't went and looked at it all yet, so thank you for bringing that up.
Nathan, this is Justin. I know that the. Memorial Hall roof in years or in times past. Has some issues with with the wind blows. So I would, I mean, seeing the amount of wind that came through, I would at least. Hope that someone can go look, you know, just assess it to see if there's any any other problem. Do, yeah, just assess it to see if it needs it or anything.
Rick Becker's place. The other tree in the memorial hall.
I had a tree fall into the street, but I don't believe it damaged anything. Wouldn't matter too much if it did because that's the street that's going to be replaced with the Adam Street project. I don't, I didn't see any damage. I cleaned it off and raked it off. It seems to be as. Is fine and is potholed and riddled and cracked as it ever was, so.
Well, Stephen, there is a policy that says that if a private property tree falls and damages, even a dirt road, that the homeowner is a hundred percent responsible, so.
Yes, but if a tree falls in the forest and it doesn't make a new hole, does it incur a cost?
Good analogy, Stephen.
Okay, I don't have anything else unless anyone else on the council has anything at this time. Okay, how about any public comment?
Are they still on?
We got a couple here with us still.
Sherry's cat might say something.
I I don't have anything.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Alrighty, I would call a question for. Some of our favorite, some of the people's favorite parts. Yeah, Levi made a motion to adjourn at eight thirty seven and Stephen, did you second?
I seconded it before it was even made. I I knew that Levi was waiting for that. He set his vacuum cleaner down. He was prepared for the moment. He was on the draw.
Okay, alright.
I am on the blocks waiting for the pistol.
We have a motion to adjourn by Levi, seconded by Stephen. Any more discussion? I. Okay, all in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye. I got Justin.
Aye.
Okay, there we go. Got all five. Motion passes to adjourn eight thirty seven, five zero. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Nathan.
Gentlemen.